We have everybody here, so. Windsor Heights Regular Meeting of the City Council is called to order. Roll call.
Susan Skerrys. Geez, that's getting me. I'll give her some time. Joseph Jones. Mike LaFredo. See him on here.
Yeah, he's there.
Mike Jones.
Here.
And Teresa Harns.
Good evening, I'm here.
Okay, folks, please join me in Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda?
移到
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo. Mike. Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is public hearing. I have a motion to open the public hearing.
移到
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo. I think Mike is muted. Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Travis, we got anybody on record for wanting to speak on the ordinance?
I've not received any messages or email.
I think I am unmuted.
Yep, now we can hear you, Mike.
Now we can hear you. We can even see you.
And I don't have anything in the chat either.
Is there anybody who's on the audio that wants to speak on the animal control and protection ordinance amendment? Hearing none, motion to close.
移到
We get a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo. Mike LaFredo. Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of the first reading of ordinance twenty one oh one, amending the code for related to animal control and protection. Motion to approve?
移到
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item is public forum. Any time set aside for comments from the public on items of city business other than what's on the agenda? We will not take any action. State your name and address for the record. No more than five minutes. No one from the public hearing none. Next item is consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration. Motion to approve?
移到
Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay, roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of resolution twenty twenty one dash zero one, authorizing the city of Windsor Heights to submit an application for the federal transportation block grant SCBG to Des Moines MPO. Motion to approve?
移到 Move to approve.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerrys. Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of the twenty eighty agreement with ARL for animal control shelter services. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
So someone want to just kind of walk us through like what does it all entail? What?
Just kind of piggybacking on what we did at last meeting on the new twenty eighty with Polk County for picking up animals. And instead of us taking them to Public Works for temporary sheltering, when we pick them up, they will be taken to ARL at this point. And then ARL will hold them for seven days, a minimum of seven days by Iowa code. And we'll have a process in which residents that own the pets can get a release to go reclaim them. So this is just the, this didn't come with the original council form because I didn't get this agreement until the day of the council meeting, so it just finalizes that process.
Chad, do you, do you, do the police take, take the animal to ARL or does the Public Works people do it?
Polk County will do it from now on, so public.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought.
Be clear out of it. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for walking us through that, Brad. I just needed to remind myself how the process was going to work, so thank, it's on paper, but that's helpful. Thank you.
Ideally, that's what it came with the last action form, but like I said, we just didn't get it in time, so.
Any further questions? Motion's been seconded. Roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of police department fleet vehicle purchase to include all upfetting and equipment at an estimated cost of fifty six thousand one hundred and forty two dollars. Motion to approve?
移到
Second.
Any discussion?
Just real quick on this one. I guess it's not really luck, but it was kind of luck in this case that we had a vehicle that was damaged in a deer accident. And that resulted in us getting probably twice what we would have got out of it on trade-in, which helped with the cost of this. We did have fifty five thousand budgeted, so we're slightly over that, but the additional amount of money can be absorbed in a police department budget without a budget amendment. And this vehicle will be a marked fleet vehicle that will be on the street.
And this is a hybrid, is what I read.
It is, and because it's a hybrid, that actually increases the price by about four thousand dollars, but we think that we'll get that back on the backside in fuel and maintenance costs. And we're actually kind of excited to be one of the first in the area to get these, so.
I'll be interested, Chad, if that holds true, that there is a savings on that. I've heard both things about the SUVs, hybrid SUVs being more efficient gas.
Which, we track things pretty closely, so we know fairly quickly whether, whether we're seeing that return or not.
Okay, well, let us know, would you?
I will.
Thank you.
Chad, who else in the metro is using them?
I know that there's orders out for them. I don't know if anybody's actually got them on the street yet.
Okay. Good, number one.
Chad, why, why did we get a hybrid this year but a Durango last year?
So last year, we were running into a problem with Ford being backordered, and they were telling us it was going to be several months before we got the vehicle. And the Durango was actually cheaper last year, and we wanted to try one of those to see if the team liked those better than the Explorers. Come to find out, once they got it, they liked the vehicle, but the, the way that it's set up, as far as the gear shifter on the floor presents some challenges when you're putting your mobile computer and stuff like that in the car. And so they're not as happy with it as we thought they may be. And then, of course, we had the Duratio, which damaged the car while it was at the upfitter, so it took forever to get it here anyway. But the idea was to, to try the Durango and see if they liked them. As I recall, I don't think we looked at the hybrids last year just simply because of the cost difference and the fact that Ford told us they had a bunch of recalls, and they're all sitting in a plant waiting on that to be done. So it was going to be an absorbent amount of time before we saw the vehicle.
There were a couple of price to Durango and Ford back then.
Couple thousand difference is all. It wasn't very much.
Okay, but, but which one was less?
Last year, the Durango was, as I recall, it was less than two thousand dollars difference.
Okay. Good.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of resolution twenty twenty day code two, setting a time and place for a public hearing on ordinance twenty one oh two. Amends the change one fifty six of the Code of Ordinances related to property maintenance and residents' housing code. The time and place for the public hearing will be February one. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on it?
Since this one's mine as well. Basically, as you can see in the, the council action form, I went through through the rental code, and there were several things in there that wording wise didn't make sense. There were some things in there that could present some problems or challenges if we tried to enforce them. And so I worked closely with Aaron and Matt Brick and Legal to make sure that we had all that cleaned up. And again, the goal of this would be that, once we get through this process, then Safe Building will begin actual rental inspections. And the fire department will manage the database and continue to send out letters. Rental, sorry, Safe Building is, is more versed with building codes, and that's their expertise. And I think we'll have a better program by having people that do that daily in that role versus the, the fire guys trying to figure some of that out and passing it back and forth between City Hall and us.
So, so no, no, come again about the code violations. Who looks for those?
Oh, it depends. So this is specific to rental inspections and rental properties.
Yeah.
Safe Building will do the inspections, and then the fire department will still manage the rental database, send out updates for renewals. And still have a pulse on what's going on with those and report, reports will come back from Safe Building to the fire department. But if you're talking about actual code violations, those are handled through City Hall.
Okay, the, the initial inspections for the rental. Is that for the initial rental and then each time they're re-rented, is it done again?
The current code requires that the, there be an inspection for the initial rental and then every eighteen months thereafter. But there's not a requirement that they have it inspected between renters. If they sell the property, they do. They have to have it inspected to transfer the rental inspector, the rental certificate over.
But every eighteen months?
Correct. It's currently every eighteen months, and that's something that, you know, you as council certainly can suggest something different if you would like. Some communities do twenty four months. And there was some discussion when we were going through this about whether we stay with eighteen months or suggest twenty four or what the, the preference of council would be. I don't really have a preference one way or the other. If somebody else does, I'm happy to, to hear that and adjust the, the code to reflect that, but it's currently eighteen months.
Wasn't there some discussion going on about standardizing the inspections and also the timing metro wide?
No, not that I'm aware of. Everybody does something just a little quirky with their rental inspections, so it's kind of tough to match them up across the metro anyway. Some do inspections, some do self-inspections, some don't do inspections at all, so it's really kind of what, what the governing body wants to do.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item is kind of different. Consideration or Consider Plan of Survey at sixty six twenty five Washington.
To the council, this request was brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission last week by Mr. Mike Moore, who is in attendance this evening, and he can answer your questions. But this is a very straightforward housekeeping matter in terms of Mr. Moore is looking to split a portion of his odd-shaped parcel and attach the parcel will be split to his neighbor and make two pretty congruent and rectangular parcels. Mr. Moore has indicated that he intends to do this just to readjust the lot lines and make them easier to understand. He does not have any interest or his purchaser does not have any interest in building, buildings on this property at this time. And the ability to actually build it or construct a, a building there is in question too because of the terrain back at the back lot. So Mr. Moore, if you have any questions or would we like to explain a little bit more your request, the council would love to hear from you, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm awesome. I'm Mike Moore, and I'm the owner of sixty five twenty five Washington. And the neighbor to me to the west, his, my backyard goes into his, so like my property line turned into an L in the backyard. So like directly behind where his garage is. I currently own that land, so he has no backyard. So basically, I approached him about wanting that property and straightening off our property lines. And he wanted that, that way he was able to have a backyard. And then all, now all the property lines will be straight and congruent and look like a normal lot line versus having that little straggling piece on the other side.
So it doesn't add a lot or anything like that?
No.
It just straightens about. Okay, thank you.
Travis, did we get a motion to approve this?
I, I don't recall, no.
Okay, need a motion to approve it?
Move to approve.
One second.
Any discussion for Mr. Moore since he's on the line?
No.
Roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Thanks, Mike, for coming and explaining it.
Not a problem. Thank you, guys.
Next item is consideration of change request number two for the PCC patching project for last year. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of pay request number four final on the twenty twenty PCC patching project. Motion to approve?
移到
I will second.
Any discussion of this item? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of pay request number nine on the twenty twenty Street Improvements Project sixty ninth street and Allison Avenue. Motion to approve?
移到
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item.
Can I just ask a quick question, Dave? I'm sorry. Can I just ask a quick question on Allison? Is, is it completed, the whole thing completed now?
I think if I remember reading, the only thing that's left is some grading and some seeding.
This is Justin. I can explain. So all the paving's done. Time they got around to backfilling and whatnot, it started to freeze and snow was coming. So the only thing left in the spring is just the final grade, all that, and then seed it. Otherwise, everything else is up and done.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Next item is consideration of pay request number nine, College Drive Improvement Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item are reports. Teresa, do you start off, please?
Sure, happy to. I participated in the first MAC meeting in January, so I'm excited for that new committee. We received a couple of updates, and Dave, please feel free, free to chime in here where I, I missed something. But we got an update from the Justice Center project. They have an eviction prevention program that they've been coordinating. There are some CARES dollars that have been going into that as well as some Polk County dollars. They've allocated one point one million dollars to help keep folks in their homes during this last year. The program is out of money. Polk County just put another three hundred thousand dollars in there. They did provide us with a map of Polk County that demonstrated and showed kind of where they had the most number of requests and where they were serving the greatest number of populations. Windsor Heights, I think, was the, was the only community that actually didn't have any applications, and so we have, the program hasn't served anybody in our community. So I don't know if that's because we've not promoted it or, or, or if there's just nobody who needs assistance. So, you know, we do have quite a few rental properties, so I was kind of surprised to see that. But so I'll make sure that we get the information over to Whitney, and maybe we can make sure that that's in our next newsletter to let folks know that it's available and there is assistance to help if they are in need. They, like I said, they just put a few more dollars in there, and what they do is help transit, they'll help with an immediate need and then transition folks who need more longer term funds available to help with an ongoing, more sustainable program if that's necessary. So I appreciated that update, and it was good to know about the program. We also received a CBB update and then an update from the Greater Des Moines Partnership. And they provided an update on a project that they have, that they're going to be outlining here or, or launching here shortly to continue to recruit and attract talent in the, in the metro. And that's really at some targeted industries that they've been focused on. So that's my update. Public safety, Chad's working on our next scheduled committee meeting dates for the rest of the year, so I think we start meeting again next month. Okay, that's really the end, I update.
I, I hope the people that have the greatest need to get the information about possible funding. Just our city, but everywhere else, yeah, you know, the virtual stuff doesn't, the social media stuff, I just, I think some of the greatest people with greatest need don't have the ability to get that. How you deal with it, but I think it's an issue that could probably be talked about at least. And maybe some other city has a way of doing that, whether it's a mailer or, you know, or something. I, I don't know. I don't know the answer, obviously. And there's a lot of non-speakers, English-speaking people. So it's, it's not unique to us, but I, I, I just have a lot of compassion there for that, and, and so, so I bring it up for that reason.
Mike, I think you're right on, and I appreciate you bringing that up. I know one of the things that I've been doing over the, whether it was, you know, when we were dealing with the Duratio here in our community or as I, you know, even as a landlord, have, have had folks in difficult situations. And so I would say that I think you're right on, and I think the more that we can talk about it, that's one of the reasons that I brought it up here. Not that we have a great big audience, but just so that you all know and remember to share that with folks that, that we know. And then we'll make sure that we get this over to Whitney and the, the communications, the administrative team, and then they can, you know, put their great minds to work to figure out what are some ways that we can, even if it's posting, you know, something in the city hall or something like that to let folks know. So the more people see it, the more people know about it, the more people will be able to access it.
Yeah, I think that, that's good. There's probably some leadership group that communicates with some of the non-speakers too.
I think this was all done through, like, I think it's the Polk County Housing Trust, of which we are a member, and it contribute to them. So that was the gentleman that spoke and gave us the information. So there are anywhere from as an average of twenty to forty that go before the judge, and there have been up to one hundred in the metro area at any one time. So it was quite an interesting deal, and we'll see if we can get some more information. But they, they do have their own website and everything else, and they had a map of how many by zip code are affected. And since we have our own, we came up zero, so.
So that Polk County partners with Rossi, the Refugee Alliance of Central Iowa, and their communications information person works closely with a variety of groups and churches and things to reach the non-English speaking population too, just FYI.
Okay, well, that's good to know too, Chad.
Mike Jones?
Thank you. There is an email I received from Bravo. Apparently, they are partnering with DART as far as a project for art at the, the bus, bus stations. And we have a, you know, pretty brand new one there at Walmart. And so I think that it is being considered. They're, they're installing glass panels, you know. I think they're technically two-dimensional public art concepts is the, the official title for them. So Bravo and Dart are partnering together to bring these to a number of bust installations. And I believe the, the, the ones in Windsor Heights are up for consideration, so that would be nice if we get get something installed there at Walmart. Second thing is, I think it would be in our best interest to have either a work session or at least a discussion item based upon the results of the investigation in December, so that we could make appropriate modifications to the SOP or the city code to, I guess, deter or prevent things like that from happening again. So at the very least, a discussion item, but if we need to have a work session again on the SOP, I'd ask the council to consider that as well. That's all I've got.
Mike LaFredo?
I'll pass, Dave. I have nothing to add.
Joseph?
I'm piggyback off of what Mike Jones said. DART and Bravo doing the art shelters. And I, I've discussed it with Dennis as well to make sure that we stay on top of our timing in terms of outreach to the community and then talking about what our new shelters might look like, because I think we're going to want to go through the design and approval phase sooner rather than later in terms of wanting to make sure we get that up and moving, so we'll have it before we have snow again the next season. in terms of wanting to make sure we get that up and moving, so we'll have it before um, we have snow again the next season. So we want to have those in place uh, for the next uh, for the next construction season, that'll be my hope. Um, you recall, we had a DART um, update back in the end of December, but our first meeting of the year, uh, early part of January, we re-elected officers and we discussed our legislative agenda. Um, you might also recall that you've received an update on some other things like the thirty-foot bus purchases um, that occurred. Um, and also um, we're working on the budgets, so we'll have a budget workshop at the end of January to continue to discuss um, DART budget and finances, and part of the legislative agenda this year is to work with the our delegation that represents all of our member cities, but also the, the legislature at large to find us um, some alternate ways to develop long-term funding for public transit.
Dart, uh, Joseph, have, have they started the route to Grimes yet?
Um, I do not know the exact answer to that, Mike. I don't think so, not yet.
I, I don't think, I haven't seen anything on it.
I'll double-check on the timing and, and let you know.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, Joseph?
No, that's it for me.
Okay, Susan?
Um, Metro Waste Meeting is on Wednesday, and just wanted to say congrats to um, Officer Kyle Johnson, who won the Police Officer of the Year Award. Congrats also to Brett Murcille, who won the Firefighter of the Year Award. Um, these awards were presented on Saturday, so congratulations to both of those two.
There's more coming that will, they're posted, I think they're spaced out about two days apart, but uh, our Medic of the Year for twenty-twenty was Jared Dummermuth and Jeremy Deech. Uh, they both received the same number of votes. Uh, our Most Improved Firefighter of the Year was Brett Murcille. And then we also had another round of life-saving awards for Officer Palmer, Officer Bowers, Jared Dummermuth and Brett Murcille, related to an overdose. Um, so they were all presented Saturday night at that dinner, but they're spaced out on social media a couple days apart, so be looking for those.
Will those, will those be in our, our city newsletter too, Chad?
I can get with Whitney and get them in there, yeah.
Yeah, I would think that's uh, good information.
Hey, Dennis?
Yes, sir.
Have you got any comments to make?
Not this evening, thank you.
Okay. I think we've got uh, the directors, Public Works, Public Safety, and Communications reports are all in there in writing. I didn't know if you wanted to make any further comments on them or if they wanted to. Hearing none of those, uh, we will have a work session immediately following, so I need to have a motion to adjourn to February one for a regular meeting and just do a council work session immediately following.
Look to adjourn.
I had a motion by Mike LaFredo, so seconded by Harns.
Roll call.
Skerrys?
Yes.
Uh, Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harns?